Thank you. I'd like to call the Litchfield Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting to order at 7:03. Will this go through with our roll call attendance and introduction? I'll start with you, George.
George LaVash, member.
Zach Schneider, alternate.
Laura Gandia, member.
Steve Perry, member.
All right, and we're going to appoint you, Zach, as a full voting member tonight. And we have one case on the agenda this evening. That is case number 20250721-1. And that is a variance from LZO Article 1207.02, wetland setback, minimum of 75 feet to replace an existing porch that extends three feet closer to the wetlands than the current buffer allows. Order and applicant is Simon and Wee McCormick. Location of property is 15 Johnson Circle, Litchfield, New Hampshire, 03052. Map one, lot 109. If you want to come up to the... Just introduce yourselves, please.
I'm Simon McCormack.
So we have four members tonight. Typically, we have five members. And why you want to consider this is you need three members to vote in favor of your application. So that means you need three out of the four of us to vote in favor. So if you want to continue it until next month in the hopes that we have five members, you can do that, or you can proceed with just the four recognized, and you need to get three out of four. Would you like to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. So what you can do, if you just want to go through, tell us what you want to do, and then go through those five variance points, the criteria.
Okay, sure. So Simon and Nancy McCormack, I've got a few little things that I'll talk about, but I won't be take too long.
Take your time.
Go through quickly. Obviously, we moved into 15 Johnson Circle actually last year when we bought the property. And we basically bought this for our retirement home. So we've been living in the U.S., you can probably hear a bit of an accent. Been living in the U.S. for 30 years, in New England area, and New Hampshire, Nashua for the last 10 years. And we moved to Litchfield at the end of last year. So we'd actually been looking for retirement homes. I think the first time we looked at a retirement home was 10 years ago. My wife likes to plan well in advance, so we've taken a lot of thought over getting the property and looked at a lot of different ones. And I think the one in Johnson Circle, Annandale on the River, it's just across from the Knoll Tree Farm. It's a really good location, really nice property. But as you can expect, any, there's always a few little things in any property that you want to change, especially if we'll probably be there 20 to 30 years. So we, today, we're here to really talk about the deck that we currently have. Very, very small deck, and we want to basically improve that piece for us. So essentially, the deck today is a, it's like, this is a single-family house with a basement, a single-floor property with a basement. So the deck is on that first floor, the basement's below it, the deck is essentially 10 feet off the ground with two poles holding it up. And it's relatively small. For us, it's kind of unusable. Our deck table that we brought from our other property doesn't even fit on the deck. So one of the things we realized is that we did want to improve that deck to a bigger one. And if we're going to do the work, we realized that really we want a three-season porch is the best accommodation for us, because it obviously is quite close to the wetlands and the bugs and so on and so forth. So we figured out the porch is the best thing for us. We contacted a local professional builder to look at the work, someone who'd actually done other work in Annandale on the River, so he's well-known to other people. Contacted him, and he basically did a design for us, which I included in the package, so you'll see what that design is for. And we're fairly procedural, so we went through the process of the next thing in our areas to basically apply for permission to our HOA, because Annandale River has a HOA. Barbara from the HOA is actually here supporting us today. Went through that approval, described it all to them so they could see what it is. Once we got their approval, we then went, I think actually our builder did the permit, applied for the permit. And at that point, only then did we find out we've actually encroached a little bit closer to the wetlands. We didn't actually realize until that point. So the existing deck, I think, is, now I've seen it, is a couple of feet behind the 75-foot variance for the wetlands. And this deck, which is a 10 by 8, will go three feet closer to the variance. And when I say the deck will go three feet closer, basically, the supports that are outside will go down probably three feet closer to the variance. I'm going to go over the other things. I was just taking a breath for a second, see if there's anything you wanted to add to my initial thing. Okay. So I looked at the facts supporting the case section. Obviously, I wrote responses in the section to that, and I just wanted to highlight a few things. Number one, the public interest section, as I mentioned, we got, we started with HOA approval. Actually, we started by looking at other porches in the area. So there's other porches, some of the decks have been converted to porches in our area, and they all look very close to the properties. That's why we want to get it professionally done. You, when this is done, you won't even know that it's been changed. It'll look exactly like the other properties would do. The spirit of the ordinance in terms of being closer to the wetlands, and I think I mentioned earlier, it's really just the two supports on the front of the deck that will go into the slightly closer to the variance, slightly closer to the wetlands. Section three, the substantial justice. Obviously, this home improvement for us basically is significant, because right now, we can't use the deck in our minds. I don't think I've actually been on the deck at all in the times that we've been there. So this basically is significant to us, because it allows us to use this area for a long time to come, both being large enough to accommodate us, but also having the porch, which will be significant to us. In a way, to be able to be within that 75-foot makes the deck still too small and probably not viable for us to do the work. So for us, it's really important that we're allowed to do this. And the fourth idea, the property value. Essentially, we believe this will increase the property value, not only our property, but also the neighbors. And actually, what I didn't mention is, in the public interest piece, the first thing we did actually was talk to our neighbors, because a lot of our neighbors have had work done either on decks or porches over the years here. So they're all fully in support of us improving this, you know, and making everybody happy. Property value was also, as I mentioned, it's a professional company that'll do really good, high-quality work, that has done work elsewhere in the area. And the unnecessarily hardship on number five, probably you mentioned it, essentially, from our perspective, the current deck's not really viable for us because of its size and location, so this would be a significant help to us. Okay?
Okay. The board of questions? I have the application here. Do you get it?
What's the dimensions of the current porch?
So 5.5 times 7.5 of 8, something like that. So now the new one can be 8 times 10.
Okay.
And the original one is what, did you say again?
5.5.
5 by 7, right?
Yeah, 5.7 or...
5 by 7.
Oh, so...
No, more than...
5.5 by 7, okay. Sorry.
5.5 by 7.5.
Okay. Current one, that's the current.
Too many fives and sevens in that.
So what's the land, like, right after the deck look like? It's not a yard, because you can't have it to be a yard, right?
There's grass going up to where the, basically, there's a little stream that is down there, which is the start of that wetland area. So it goes down on a slope from the house. It's all grass for like 75 feet, all the way to the front of where the wetlands tree, like, trees and stuff starts to grow.
Right, so, I guess I'm, so you have the poles that are in the wetland now, right? But that, that's, so the poles are not in the wetland?
The poles are not in the wetland.
Right, so three feet after that, you're going to hit the wetland.
But, well, sorry, 75 feet from the wetland, so it's our grass is the bit that's going to be in.
But it's the wetland buffer.
Yes.
Right, so that buffer's supposed to be maintained, not supposed to be used like as a yard or anything. Is that, so what is that, what did your backyard look like?
It's 50 foot, it's 50 foot non-disturbance.
Right.
So with the 70, between the 75 and the 50, they can have grass. There's, here's the picture.
Okay, I get what you're saying, okay, yep, all right, okay.
So this is, that's the...
That's the non-disturbance, yeah.
Yeah, this is their existing deck, and that's the...
Gotcha, okay. So that's the 25 feet right there.
Right.
Yep. Any questions?
So your neighbor at 11 had previously come before the ZBA for a similar type of thing, and they, right, although precedent, it doesn't matter?
No, and the wetland setback was literally right at, I think, the buffer was right at their house, so no matter what, they needed relief to do that, so it was, so the fact, so we do not set precedent.
Right.
But the facts are distinguishable between that case and this case as well.
Okay, great.
And there was no way to keep the support structures behind the buffer and support the porch correctly? I don't know, okay, no?
I don't, I don't think so, no.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't an option that was...
Because it's like 10 feet high, so it's quite high off the ground. So that support being in exactly the right place probably is really important to us.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have any questions?
No, I really don't.
Okay.
I, I remember when I was on the planning board, when these were all, came through for that, to be built. And one of the biggest questions we had about it all was that there wasn't enough space to put decks or three-season porches that everybody loves in these units. And it doesn't surprise me that you're here. I mean, that's why I kind of don't have any questions. I mean, I, I don't know.
And I think that's typical of builders, that they do that. But then again, now you're balancing integrity of our zoning.
It's a rock and a hard place, what it is, yeah. I mean, I think that what they're proposing is quite reasonable, but doesn't mean it's not in the setback.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Zach? So then, I think we had a letter, so I'm going to, did you have anything else you want to say? I'm going to come back to you two, I'm going to open it up for public input.
Okay.
So I'm going to open it up for public input, and I do have a letter dated July 14th from Joseph Oziel and Annette, 3 Johnson Circle, Litchfield, New Hampshire, addressed to the Town of Litchfield's Zoning Board of Adjustment, case number 20250721, applicant, as we already stated, as but as we have no concerns and do not oppose the applicant's request. So we have that, I think we have... Here we do have in here as well, a letter dated June 11th, 2025, from Linda McCarthy. Good afternoon, Simon and Nancy. The board of directors had the monthly meeting today, and your RAF was on the agenda. I will respond in the order of your request. Posture for an establishment, that's not us, 8 by 10 porch. You also mentioned verbally that you were replacing the upper sliding door as well. However, that information is not contained within the scope of the project. The board has no issues. However, the town of Litchfield will need to review the setback. That should happen when you apply for the permit. The board approves pending town approval. Addition of a 10 by 22 patio. The board approves pending the town of Litchfield reviewing the setback permit approval. With respects to items two and three, would you please let Richard and Elena know the scope of these outdoor projects as a courtesy? And then that doesn't...
Yeah, there was a lot of stuff in that, sorry.
Don't need that. And we do have some pictures, and is this, what is this?
That's the, oh, sorry, that's the existing one, yeah.
Okay, so...
That's what it looks like today.
So this is your existing deck, yeah, okay. And everybody's seen this?
Yeah.
No.
And then I think those are diagrams about the new one.
And this is the three-season enclosed?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. It's the same, right?
Yeah, yeah, all those drawings of the new one, what was proposed.
And then we have, looks like some type of, maybe snippet of a subdivision plan or the site plan when it was created. Everybody's seen that? You can see where the wetland buffer is on that? All right, that's all I have in here. I do have also in here that you put, it's a 10172022-1 for 11 Johnson Circle. That was a variance that was granted to encourage 10.3 feet into the 75-foot building setback for the Wetland Conservation District for the construction of a 12 by 12 square foot deck. So that was granted. Again, that's not precedent, that was just given to us from the applicants. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the application?
I just want to say, I'm a member of the board as well.
Could you speak here? I just need you to come up here, because we need to, sorry.
I'm going to speak.
Now you're on the, now you're on the block.
Barbara Strickland, I'm a member of the board.
Okay.
We're fully behind this. We've had a number of people that have done construction. In most cases, it's not by wetlands, so that really, they get a permit, but it hasn't been a problem. There's, Doreen, the one that you mentioned at 11, went through the whole system and was granted. And we feel that, that they're doing everything that they need to do to try to make this possible. Just, just so that you know, the lands are well taken care of by the landscaper to the tree line. And then past the tree line is where the stream is.
Okay.
So there's more than enough property there, although measurements, we understand, are important.
Great.
Just want to say that Annandale as a group are behind them.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody in the audience that is in opposition to the application? There is no one. Is there anybody in the audience that has questions or concerns about the application? So we'll go back to the applicant and the board. Any questions, any further discussion before we close public input and go into deliberations?
This patio that you're going to do, I guess, to the side of it, you're going to add that as well, or is that already there?
Yeah, so the patio is going to be, I think it's 10 by 10. So start under the, no, sorry, so the patio is going to be on the side of the porch, then the porch is going to do, then under the porch.
Do they need a variance for the patio?
I was kind of, sorry.
So, yes, but no. So we don't do, we don't do a permit for patios.
Right.
But where it is in a wetlands district, we have to go for variance for anything that's considered permanent.
Yeah, okay.
So that would be a separate issue from the deck of what they're doing now.
Okay.
So they would have to come back to us for another variance?
Because that wasn't submitted with the...
I'm good.
Anything else? Nope. All right. Anybody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public input.
All in favor?
Aye.
I propose. All right, thank you. All right, any general thoughts, consensus, before we go into the variance criteria?
My thought is it's three feet, and it just appears, it's not, you know, full foundation, or, so I don't see a huge impact. And giving the, I, I won't even go into the precedents, I'll just say what I said.
Yeah, I have no concerns with the application.
All right, so I'll go through the criteria and just make sure that we're all on the same page. The variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because, as the board's aware, we have to talk about if it's going to change the character of the neighborhood or affect the health, safety, and welfare of the general community. I don't see any issues with that. I don't think it's going to change the character of the neighborhood. I think other people have decks, I think it's similar in nature, and they already have a deck.
Agreed.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed. Obviously, the spirit of the wetlands is to protect the wetland, the wetlands in town. And this is outside of the non-disturbance buffer, but it's still part of the wetland buffer. It's on poles, so it's not actually on the ground, so I think it's...
Modest impact to the buffer?
Substantial justice is done. This is a balancing act between the loss to the homeowner as it compares to the gain to the general public. I think that the loss to the homeowner is outweighed by any gain to the public, as the poles are already there, it's already existing for the most part, as is just extending an additional three feet. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished. Any thoughts on that one?
I think it would enhance the value, if anything.
Based on the planning done.
Yeah, it's already, and it's met the HOA criteria and has support by the whole association, so.
Yeah.
Little enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship for the purposes of this subparaphrase, unnecessary hardship. Hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, no fear and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of that provision to the property, and the property use is a reasonable one. And they put for their response, the shape and topography of the lot limits placement options, and the existing deck footprint is already close to the buffer. Strict enforcement imposes a disproportionate burden, given the minimal impact. The proposed porch is a common and reasonable residential use, similar to those on nearby properties.
I would agree. Everything's good.
And just so, as a learning, like, so this is a condominium, so there's really no lot lines here, so they don't have their own lot, I don't think.
Well, there's lot 14.
Right.
That's why I would actually feel a lot different about this if the association wasn't in favor of it, especially the fact that they came to speak saying that they are in favor of it.
Yeah.
Because I kind of consider them the stewards of the land.
Okay. So we have, it's a quanta lot, so it has the 25 building setback, too, from James Way Drive, and then the front setback, another one from Johnson Circle. And then you have the wetlands taking up a good portion of the backyard.
Yeah.
And the deck is a reasonable use? Any limitations, restrictions that we can think of?
I don't see any.
Not related to the duck, no.
Do we want to make sure that we limit it to the dimensions stated? As presented, I think it was 8 by 10? Who's the deck?
Yeah, I think, does anyone probably have?
That 8 by 10 is the limit for the HOA. That's what they told us.
That's the maximum limit for the HOA?
For a porch, yeah.
Okay, so...
So it's not going to get any bigger, anyway?
Right.
If you made it four seasons, could it be bigger?
I don't think so.
Okay, I just, yeah.
It's pretty small.
Sometimes I think different than others.
Yeah.
We'll have to call a bigger one, but 12.
Yeah, 8 by 10.
That's interesting, because Doreen Weiss was granted a 12 by 12.
Yeah.
Prior to those regulations being replaced.
No, so how back?
It's, that is, theirs is not an enclosed porch.
Yeah, yes, the porch is different, yeah.
Ah, okay, because that was in 2022.
I went to do the drive-by, and this is before I looked at all of the documents, and I could see that that other deck was well farther back, and I couldn't understand how that was there.
All right, so 8 by 10, I think we should put that in there, just so we understand. Any other concerns, restrictions? Does anybody want to make a motion?
We don't do this enough.
I know.
Yes.
Yeah, it's been a while for me.
So I will make a motion in case number 202507-21 to grant the applicant's request for a variance from LZO Article 1207.02, wetland setback, minimum of 75 feet, to replace an existing porch that extends three feet closer to the current, three feet closer to, oh, wait, I want to stop. So Matt, so that language, so is it, it's extending three feet into the buffer?
Into the buffer, yeah.
Okay, so to grant the variance to replace an existing porch that extends three feet into the 75-foot wetland buffer, with the condition that, for the construction of the deck, with the, with the condition that the deck be no greater than 8 by 10. Do I have a second?
Just coming up.
All in favor?
Aye.
I propose. So the passed, 4 is yours, sir.
Thank you very much.
Now we have communications and miscellaneous business.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I did receive an email from Marion Colby, looking for a representative from this board to help with the 250th Celebration of America. And she's asking for somebody from this board to act as a representative. Any takers?
What's the...
I am already sort of representing the conservation commission.
Okay. Do you have any more details of what that entails?
Yeah, I want to see, turn them on.
They're going to meet, must be the third Wednesday of the month at 6:30, I think it is? No, it can't be Wednesday. Must be maybe Monday, after the heritage meeting. So they're trying to plan a celebration for the 250th. And the current thing might be two days, one day historical, the second day, like, a field day at Deripon. So historical may be focused around the Old Town Hall and the muster field and the fire station and the church. So maybe a parade, and then some kind of field games, maybe an art show or something at Talent Hall. But, so they want people in town to help plan it, organize it, perhaps to fundraising, or come up with fundraising ideas. So, the very first meeting was this past week.
Any...
What's the ZBA going to do on that?
I think it's just to have people...
Volunteers. It's just, it's just to build up a, you know, some bodies and have people to spread the word and come up with ideas.
I don't think you're going to be talking about zoning.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was a little confused then.
Yeah, I understand the confusion. I just think it's a way to try to get people to help. Anyone? I cannot commit, so I'm passing on that.
Yeah, on Wednesdays?
Uh, no, it's not Wednesday, hello, when was it?
I've got six kids' practices, so I'm not going to be able to make that.
When's the 250th, two years?
Next year.
Next year.
Is it next year?
Next year.
All right. Boy, I'm not going to hit 225th.
Zach, no?
I have too many kids' practices.
I can just report back that we do not, I mean, I can check that out.
You know, if push comes to shove, I could say... You know, if push comes to shove, I could, I could say I kept two hats.
All right. And I did need to, uh, run this by the board. I am the ZBA representative for the Economic Development Committee, and the Board of Selectmen has extended that charge. And I was told that I needed to come back to you folks to make sure that I get approval to continue to be the ZBA liaison for that. Anybody have any issues with that?
Do we need to vote?
No.
Okay.
Okay. I, I.
I pretty much listen to or watch every meeting that happens in this town, so I've seen you there.
Okay.
I think you're doing a great job.
All right, right. Somebody else can help too if they want. But I, I, I actually, I, I think that's a worthwhile endeavor, as, as all the committees are, so it's a good thing. Any other questions, comments before we close?
Did we have meeting minutes from the last time?
I didn't think so. I'm gonna pass on those and wait to see. No, I don't have any.
All right, because we had one from the floor.
From the board, right.
That's it, I'm good.
Do you have anything for us? You know, do we have?
Uh, House Bill five seventy-seven passed. So we're gonna be, um, probably having a discussion here as to zoning for ADUs, whether ours still actually comply or whether that's outside of that. So should be interesting.
They enlarged them, didn't they?
Uh-huh.
They, they enlarged them, didn't they?
The verbiage is, uh.
So their minimum is now larger than ours?
So they stated in the newest one, it hasn't been released yet, that, um, you can have up to nine fifty before a municipality has to be done, but it doesn't actually say that that's their maximum.
Mm-hmm.
But they do set a minimum of where they, you can restrict them to under seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Right, and we have five hundred as your minimum.
Five hundred, yes.
So.
They also changed a lot of the verbiage from may to shall, which changes a lot for us. As far as, well, me basically for the building side. We can have them go off for the detach and still have to go in front of planning, but as like, for, as a count or municipality, you can allow them to just tell them no. Like, they shall be permitted to have and attach or detach.
Really? Shall.
And they got rid of the requirement for the interior door to.
They got rid of the, well, it's still required, but it's not required in here. They still have.
Right.
Now do the comment, yes.
Right, yeah.
And they basically broadened the attached and detached definitions. It's like the bigger things for us that we're gonna have to look at. Because they just are stating that like for a detached, it can now go outside the pre-existing structure, where we used to have it according to our zoning contained in the existing structure.
Right.
So there's just a lot of verbiage that's changed. I know we have a couple contractors in town that are already trying to push that nine fifty. The way that I'm interpreting it, still, we're still stricter on ours. We're just requiring to do the same thing at eight hundred feet, not nine fifty.
Yeah.
So it, you know, that's just coming through.
And, and the language of that, because I actually reached out to Senator Murphy's office, who was one of the sponsors, because I had a client saying, we were allowed to have nine hundred and fifty. I'm like, no, you're not. And he's, they're like, here we are. I'm like, no, you're not. So I called Senator Murphy, and I'm like, that language does not say that a municipality, um, is obligated to have nine fifty.
So, yeah, so for me and you as of right now, we have the same opinion on that verbiage. We do have people that are bringing in representatives, state representatives with, again, I don't get to see the whole conversation, so I don't know what's being pushed to their side. They're responding to that. But as far as the building inspector and the ZBA are gonna be playing a much more crucial role moving forward with the verbiage that's changing.
And my response from, uh, when I had that similar concern from Senator Murphy's office was, well, that's, I, basically, I understand what you're saying about the language, but that wasn't our intent. And I'm like, well, it doesn't matter what your intent is. I'm reading the language, and the language does not allow nine hundred and fifty square feet as a matter of right.
Correct.
It's saying, if the municipality wants to allow a bigger than nine fifty, then they can provide for that in their zoning. But if they don't, then it doesn't mean that you're gonna get that.
Right. Correct.
And so that language, it, in my opinion, has, has a lot of challenges.
So we reached out to NRPC, had the same discussion. They're in the same, they're in the same boat as we are with the way that our zonings and ordinances are in place. Unfortunately, some of the contractors in town don't like that answer, but, you know, the, the, at the end of the day, they can still go for a variance. Like, that's the process in which we're still managing until I do otherwise. So.
Yeah, I think.
Not to hear, not to tell you, no, you can't have it. It's just, you know, you gotta follow the proper channel.
And I, I, I think, is when they see the nine fifty, they think that they can have nine fifty as a matter of right.
E- exactly, exactly.
The, the policing of a detached ADU is gonna be a nightmare down the road.
So the detached ADUs for us in town requires them to go through the planning board. So we, that's one of the benefits to having it versus, um, say, somebody puts in a bonus room above a garage and they decide to put a bathroom in there. It's very simple to add a kitchen in later and a bedroom, and we'll never know about it. The thing with these ADUs that me and Anne Fire have discussed is life safety at the end of it, if you're putting these in and people don't know about them and they're called to assist, there's no record that we should be checking the barn for an ADU or we should be checking about the garage for an attached ADU.
Right.
So there's just, there's just some works in progress that's gotta get tied with that. So with five seventy-seven coming through, a lot of, you know, contractors in town have already been trying to push that nine fifty and I'm pushing back, but, um, you know, again, it's the way I interpret it, it's not right. It's the max square footage. For them, before they go to municipality, we're putting in a stricter law or ordinance that requires them just to go sooner. Doesn't mean they can't get it, just saying at eight hundred, that's when you have to apply for your variance.
Right.
So your position is, I understand, it's at seven fifty, you can have, you can have seven fifty as a matter of right?
You could have, you could have under eight hundred for us.
Right.
When I read ours, it's, for us, it's, it's five hundred to eight hundred square feet. So I look at it, if you have anything in between there and you have the setbacks and you've done the proper channels for a detach going through planning and they approve it, at that point, for me, it's making sure you're already using existing, so as long as we're within the setbacks and it meets building code and life and safety, I don't wanna put my personal opinions over what our ordinance is saying.
So we're actually giving them an extra fifty feet?
Yes.
Wow, look at us.
Yeah.
See that?
Yeah.
They should be happy.
We, we didn't start that way.
No, I know.
Yes.
That was amended to go to eight hundred.
That's what it is now, so. The current shade, we're still.
Yeah.
Being more gracious than what the state statute allows, so we're giving people an extra fifty feet for the accessory dwelling.
Yes.
The, the issue that comes is the bigger these get, the more we're gonna have to go back. When these first started, the fear was that if said family member is no longer around, they're gonna rent the unit out, which is against the regulation. Okay? And we wanted to stay away from the detach because of the same reason, because it makes it more likely. Well, now, if we have to do it.
So you can, according to our ordinances, they're allowed to rent them, but they got a deed to the letter that requires them not to try to split that lot if we were to ever change our land usage to be able to make that detach its own separate lot.
We had, says the owner of the property shall occupy either the primary or secondary dwelling unit. And I thought, we can't do that anymore.
You can't do that anymore, and they're not required to be a family member either.
There you go.
So what could happen in theory is somebody could buy land, throw an accessory dwelling on, and just use it as a two-family.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's basically, um, digging into it and looking into it, that's basically what it's changed us, is anything that's residential is now gonna become a, at least two-family.
And, and the bigger they become, the more likely that is to happen.
Yeah. And depending on your lot, if you have a duplex, that lot's still rented by verbiage and accessory dwelling.
So you can now have four?
So now you're gonna potentially, if it's split with a lot by depending on how you've done it.
Wow.
They can get extra units on each of those properties.
Wow.
Well, I, I think what we need to do is, I think we need to, um.
And my other, my other one thing that I, it, when it comes to it, is we're gonna have to figure out what livable square footage is.
We don't define it in our.
So the IRC doesn't define it and the IDC doesn't define it. We have, um, standards in which are set to minimize, but there's certain things that we don't account for in an ADU right now, such as stairs or closets. But if you look at the IRC code, those are conditioned spaces with seven feet or more pet space, that's considered livable, habitable area. So, you know, we're, we're mad. Are we counting those or are we not counting those?
I was always under the impression they would be counted.
So.
Should be counted, not would be, should be counted.
Yeah, so there's just, there's just verbiage that as we get more into them, I think zoning is definitely gonna play a huge part in managing how these things explode because it's going to happen.
Oh, it's gonna explode?
Yep.
What I would recommend is, um, I guess I'll put this request through you, is a joint meeting with the planning board and the zoning board, because regardless, we're gonna have to update our zoning ordinance to reflect the new law. So if we can do, when we're doing that, really dig in between this board and the planning board mechanisms to be complying with state law and to achieve what we believe the town residents want as far as seeing, you know, multiple structures on a lot.
Yeah.
The problem is, the state is making these regulations that's forcing our hand.
They, they are, but we still have some creativity in us.
I know, but.
We can, um.
The problem is, it seems like we do something to try to maintain our character, and it only takes a year or two, the state changes it again, throws another curve ball, open, they don't open the door, they kick the door open to make it easier for these things to happen. And it's gonna change, it's gonna change a lot.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And that's why I think we can only do what we can do, and if we can't get that joint meeting, it can.
Yeah, I do.
Inquire into that.
I definitely put out a communication between Kim, John, myself, you guys, and see however that's gotta go, whether we wanna put it out to public, we'll definitely.
Right, well, anything we propose has to go to both.
Well, it, right, the planning board would.
Yeah.
Would obviously write it up and then.
Yeah.
But I think starting now, you know, getting a little bit of a head start, because that's usually done in the fall.
Yeah.
Because there's, there's a lot here, and there's a lot in that bill that was passing. There's a whole bunch of other stuff, too, but, you know, definitely with this, start talking, get input from the citizens and, you know, I'm sure contractors will come, which is great. And then other people to come in just to say, hey, look, what, this is some of the ways we're trying to manage it. Here's the new state statute. Here's what we have now. This is what we're thinking to kind of manage what we need to do and see what the feedback is, I think would be helpful. Anything else for us? In any cases next month that you know of?
I believe there might be one for, um.
A sign.
There could be a sign, but there's ever source and three poles getting changed potentially. So we're gonna, we'll wait, I'm gonna move this.
All right, anything else from the board? Anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn at seven forty-six?
So moved.
Anybody second that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the meeting has adjourned at seven forty-six.[1796.52]